This is now our meeting hour on the 22nd of February. Here by the Office of Education of the Northern Michigan Hilton City Municipal District Board. This is a typical meeting of the Northern Michigan Hilton City School District Board Education. This is a meeting to the public, but does not require public speaking. Public is invited to watch this evening's board for an opportunity for public participation in the voting form section of this meeting later. So comfortable in the voting form. If you have any questions, may I also introduce to the board and administration with the allegations and complaints. Please be called.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Mrs. McGidley.
Here.
Mr. Bussey.
Here.
Ms. Mallon.
Here.
Mrs. Strong.
Here.
The citizens of the United States of America, we are here in public for which it seems that our nation, our government, and the people deserve the dignity and justice of our.
Ms. Mallon.
Yes.
Mrs. McMellon.
Yes.
Mr. Bussey.
Yes.
Mrs. Strong.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
All right, we will be giving this, uh, Jolene, are you ready?
Yeah.
All right. We've got a presentation from the Northern Michigan City PTA Council. Um, I'd like to introduce Jolene and Karen, Chris Seymour, who are here. Make a special announcement.
Don't need to sign it, or because I'm not going to?
You don't need to sign it, you don't need to. I'll have to write.
All right. Good evening. I'm here to present the award winning schools, choosings, um, award winners at the beginning of the, uh, the middle of the conference. So the beginning of 2021, we chose the winners for the Northern Michigan High School Helping Cancer Warrior, Educator of the Year, and PTSA Achievement Award winner. This year, our only PTSA Achievement Award winner, um, Bandar Warrior, this is announced at the PTA Council meeting this evening, um, goes to Tammy and Karen Strong. Is that what the issue was where you want Chris Seymour, but she wanted to look at a little bit about how it is?
Making a difference in someone's life. You don't have to be rich or to relate or perfect. You just have to care. No pure words have been spoken about two people who have given so much to our school this year over these last one year. Tammy and Karen Strong appear so deeply about our community, our schools, and our children. We've been blessed by their presence. The loss of them this year has left a hole in our hearts and an empty seat everywhere. Kevin and Tammy have been beyond characters with their time and involvement in our schools over the years. Tammy has served on the PTSA boards at all of her children's schools, volunteered for many lucky campaigns, and is in her second term on our Warriors' board. When she first discussed the idea of running for the school board, it was very challenging time in our history, and, um, everybody thought she was crazy, but Tammy was up for the challenge and came as right for it. Most of the memories I have from working with Tammy on PTA events, beginning with Rockwood, continuing through high school, include Kat. He was as much a good teacher at our school as any kid can be. I remember him as always thrilled to be working with her at our variance, wearing the chicken soup every certification, um, nailing giant banners around like six thousand dollars and, um, or selling raffle tickets at the lunch table. But he always had a smile and he made me feel like I were pretty down to the finisher. And whenever Tammy volunteered for anything, you always knew that you were getting the two for one. Kevin and Tammy have not only given their time to PTA's, but to every activity that their children have been involved in. Their bands, their drama club, science and athletics. They support and they're involved everywhere they're in. Tammy was one of the first people I met at Rockwood when I joined PTA 13 years ago, and I am forever grateful for the countless memories that we've made volunteering for our kids. With Tammy's youngest son and my daughter graduating in May, our time in Northern Michigan is quickly coming to an end. I have always said that one of the best and most unexpected blessings of being involved in PTA is the friendships that we make that will last long and hard for the rest of this election. They never end in a minute. Kevin's a friend in the light of so many of our lives. Together, Kevin and Tammy were at the force, and Tammy remains a part of our family. For their time and dedication and love for our schools and our kids, I am honored to nominate Miss DeSantis, Tammy and Kevin Strong, with their high praise and their work.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Jolene. She's down there, but Chris is here. Thank you so much.
A nice surprise. Thank you so much. Ladies, I appreciate all the support and congratulations to Tammy and Miss Ken so much, but you're already two for one, and I would like to order.
Fantastic.
And we're, this is great news communication month. Rob, I can run us here with some friends to talk about. Our recommendation we're going to make to you next month about reneaming our baseball field is Rob.
All right, thank you, Dr. Martin, for the word. I appreciate you having me here tonight. Um, for those of you in the community who don't know Bernie Gobert, you missed someone. Bernie was special. Uh, I got to know him when I first got to Northern Michigan in 2006, and he was a, he was a Northern Michiganite through and through. Uh, Bernie spent 29 years teaching and coaching Northern Michigan High School, primarily as a bars and baseball coach. Recently, Bernie passed away, his son and daughter are here today with me tonight. Just to remind myself, I've met with Ike, Bernie's son, over the last couple of months, and we would like to propose naming the bars and baseball field, the Bernie Gobert Baseball Field. So I want to turn over my, to talk to you a little bit about who's there in class. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Dr. Martin, for the word. I know you're special for this area now, so I really appreciate you giving us compliments to just, uh, welcome you tonight. As, as Director mentioned, I am Bernie's son, the oldest son, as my sister like to point out. Uh, my sister Debbie's here, my mother, but that's also a part of these meetings, but we convinced her to get out of the little room with my brother in Florida for a while so she can put the air tonight, uh, she had expressed a sort of wrong thing. But our purpose tonight is, is, uh, as Rob mentioned, was to have a considerable name the baseball field, the Bernie Gobert Baseball Field. And we asked that, because my father, my father died in December 10th. Uh, he was in the hospital, whoever had opened the day, the shoots and, and those issues cascaded in, you know, passed on in December 10th. When we passed, he asked us, you know, what could we do, uh, in this name, if I could do it. So we established with the Northern Michigan High School, a scholarship fund that we're looking at funding for students each year. Uh, and also, for those that couldn't make it through our, our student funeral, which was interesting, uh, we have a donation to the Northern Michigan Athletic Association. And the Northern Michigan Athletic Association, uh, the director, Liski, uh, we had donations that came in at about $2,700. So we started saying, wow, I mean, this is real passion, this is Northern Michigan. And he loved his, uh, he, he loved his career, and he felt like he was something, hence the scholarship, but then he was the most proud of the baseball program that he developed. And he was a baseball, a baseball coach for 25 plus years. He won 350-plus games as a baseball coach. And we put together this, this, for those of you who didn't know my father, uh, I know there's been a lot of other coaches at Northern Michigan, but very few have racked up the accolades that he's been able to achieve in his career. Uh, so we're not going to take him off, he had those with him, but we did want to express our interest in trying to, uh, do something for Bernie that we call a B for grit on behalf of Northern Michigan High School, and that's the, so, uh, as we started down this road and thanking the principal, Ryan, the director, Matt Gaddy, I experienced this, but we said, well, let's see if there's really support for this in the community, because, you know, it's obviously in the minds of his family, like to see this, but is there support for this? And, uh, we, he said, well, let's see what's out, you know, let's try it on social media, see if there's anything there, and he just got this water. There's a thousand plus people that immediately liked, we had 220 shares, we had 250 comments, it was tough to supply them all, uh, the bottom line is pretty good for them. And so with that, and knowing that there was support for that, we felt a couple of things today, especially the hand principal, Ryan, and the director's, uh, faculty to make this a goal. So we asked that you consider that, something like a guy like a Huxman, do that, party again the next month, we appreciate that. Um, if there's any questions, I think.
I am going to give a recommendation to the board next month, but I'll just say, at the finals, I've been getting letters of support, and they're the best letters, because it's, you can tell that they're old timers, handwritten, in script, with, you know, handwritten, envelope, and it's, it's, it's all saying great things about your dad and what he meant to the community. So I'm very pleased, I think it is the appropriate thing to do, to show gratitude for the work that he's done, on behalf of all of our community. So thank you for your efforts, and I'm looking forward to making a recommendation to the board next month.
So if I'm right, I'm going to write some letters, I sell all time.
There's a lot of those things, simple, simple, just taking.
But you're always a gentleman, because he was fond of meeting people that were kids and things that were already built. So appealing for a couple of generations, and it's my concept, uh, same as, uh, I'm going to teach you, so you know, go on, but he was, uh, he's proud of his career, and proud of his work.
He would come home to my office every year, and I'd sit there, and he'd just start listening, and just see who he was talking to. I'm thinking to myself, Bernie, I'm sorry, I'm not that kind of person.
Well, it's basically, uh, the things that they call, I mean, Eddie Adams, Rodriguez, Uginor, you know, Spacan, anything to do with friends, he did, it was, it was really important. It's almost a blessing that he didn't do, uh, the traditional funeral, because I don't know that was a church-wide, I don't know, but I didn't want to stand in the scene like for, uh, all ours, you know, people that I do, to be there. There's a lot of people, finally, that they would love their company. So thank you, that's enough. But I have to say, I'll take that, a few, uh, back to meeting, and thank you, Martin.
Thank you very much. Sorry for your loss on the hour, I'm proud to be able to take that as a recommendation.
Thank you.
We're not group by team. That was my question. I usually don't think of the staff, because I think it's a bit.
Thank you very much. All right, next, Dr. Devin Wallace and Mr. Zach Mylley, where do we have? Um, next, oh, that is here. I thought you were doing, I think I'm by a little bit.
You can see that.
Oh, okay, perfect. And Matt Bogler, here to talk about the Northern Michigan crisis incident manual.
I'm just going to do a quick intro for Dr. Devin and Zach. On the follow-up of that, I was really good segue, and I know that you have heard about Dr. Devin all through the years, and all of you in here have had the opportunity to work with her, and she's just a true rock star. She'll be a loyal letter, this is her, hopefully, can maybe solve the matter, because you're very good. Uh, Devin helps me out so much. This, so you know, COVID world has taken our, shifted our focus on so many other things, but in my heart, we do still have to keep up with all the hard compliance pieces, with safety, with crisis incident command, all these different manuals and protocols we had to keep updated with the state of Ohio. And what I wanted to talk about, and really, I don't know what your experience yet, is having worked with Zach Mylley, he has been Dr. Devin's intern, but I've had the privilege and really blessed to have worked with him lately. And I'll give you an example of who he is. Devin is only nine, a couple short years away from retirement, and me and the town were sort of about succession plan for her. And, you know, Mr. Mylley, he's on board, it's been training under her, we hope to get him off paper real soon. Um, he's a real asset, and I'll tell you a good example of his commitment. You'll see it, or, then you can open this crisis, a man, I'll tell you, a man that we work on, and he, he went through the whole document that we've been using, and based on some events that had happened off school hours, he felt a need to renovate this document. Not only did he do a great job, but just in the last week or so, we were told by Ohio Public Security that with a passage of House 123, that we would have to make even more changes to our program. Now, Ohio has made those changes legal, and they said, we're thinking about it in this direction. So Zach then takes the document and retools it just today, but with the need to make sure that it was compliant with the new House rule, uh, as opposed to the, so that's kind of a personal quality of work from the, so I wanted to give you the opportunity to present, show you that, um, the work that he did. Are you presenting? Where did he go? Oh, you got it. Oh.
All right, thanks, Brian. Chuck sent a mail back. Good evening, Dr. Martin, we're very appreciative of taking some time to let this be, uh, to meet with you, I'm really excited about. Um, this is kind of a weird thing to be excited about. Dr. Parker, thanks for including having names in front of the plans that I hope we never have to use. This is one of those things, uh, but it's, it's very important that it is up to date, and that we're doing the best that we can to keep our students and staff and the state. Um, so as Matt said, uh, we started this process back in July, and it started out as just looking at the, looking at the mental health piece, is really where it was focused. And as we're trying to crack into it, uh, it was quite outdated. Um, the strategies or interventions into town were quite outdated, so we started with Angela Moore with that, uh, plus second Dr. Wallace's support. Uh, we kind of tore it down and built it back up. Uh, that's what we're looking at, uh, that's what we're looking at here. So, uh, there are just a few things that I wanted to highlight. Uh, this was traditionally called emergency management. Uh, this is a piece, this is probably a smaller piece than a overall emergency management book. Um, there are still building specific things like floor plans and, and those sort of interventions that we need to, um, look at on building by building level. This is more of a generalized district response plan for how we would respond to other areas for building incidents throughout the district. One of the biggest things is we, we kind of streamlined the incident command structure. Um, so we think it's our case to end off. My experience working in emergency, since I graduated in 2008, I spent some time with this EMT, which took several emergency rooms, including the clinic, and so on. And as a part of my training, to be trained through the Department of Public Security and FEMA, uh, it's actually staple, hard staple that we, the schools have an incident command structure in place, and it's clearly defined in our emergency response plan. So, um, I was able to kind of orientate, it looked like in a hospital environment, similar, uh, but really target at what the school looks like, the Dr. Carter's role is, the building manager's role is, and then the folks that support that individual in an incident, uh, command type of structure. As I mentioned, House 123, um, which will be effective March 24th, um, is going to require schools to have a threat assessment team and threat assessment, uh, planning process or response process. Uh, in today's update, we did include how to formulate that team, uh, and then what that, what that evidence-based process for the time close press look like, uh, which we, luckily, although information is readily available, uh, are out there. In addition to that, I just wanted to talk about the uniform format. So the previous annual was typ longer days, as far as format goes. It was hard to read and more difficult to follow for somebody just to connect with it in an emergency, so we took the few, scroll down to, sorry, Dr. Carter. We're going to go, we'll keep going, keep going. Till we get to some type of, let's, yep, so down one more. So this format is on a different page of, for specific incidents, they all follow the same format. Some of the, if there's related law policy, it's linked in there, definition of details, actions, uh, special considerations, and then what is new is the mental health crisis team activation. Uh, one of the big things that I noticed is that we weren't really considering when an incident could have a mental health report outside of the death of a student or staff. Uh, there are other incidents, from a gas leak, to an unplanned evacuation, anything like that, that could have a profound mental health impact on students, and so being able to respond to those mental health needs in those lesser level emergencies is important. Uh, so we included when it would be important for a building administrator to consider activating that team. Later in the year, we really defined who that team is and what that team should do in activating it. For different levels of activation, so standby level to a full implementation where they're actually providing counseling services, and then step by step, how they would support Dr. Parker, the building administrator, in an emergency. Uh, we updated the emergency checklist, forms, everything is up to date. Uh, there was a comprehensive review of the latest best practices and every least practice in school board's response. I tell everybody that I work with, and need to do, come in structure with, as a student that do have a university, that, that Northern Michigan is always ahead of the curve on everything. Uh, and I think that this update keeps us ahead of the curve and believe it will serve as a model for other school districts that are updating as a result of House 123. Uh, as a matter of fact, we admire, we can have some people take a look at it, and ask for an adapted version so that they can use it as a template for their district, if we're really hot. So I appreciate, um, the time to just go over this, there's a lot in there, so we encourage you to, to kind of come through it, but if you have any questions, I'd, I'd be happy to answer those. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Exactly. Thanks, Matt, this is incredible, comprehensive, great work, I mean, this is, like I say, I hope we never have to use any of it. But we know that, we know from experience that we have, it's always been really well prepared. It's the work that comes out, especially with that, all of that, just, uh, her position and her, uh, I don't know her position, but her personally has done such great work for the schools and for our kids, it's, it's amazing, for the district of justice. And more good news, um, this is becoming repetitive, it's kind of like, I'm Brady, right? They have another champion, Karen, that another one, Karen Jack, present for a state board.
Thank you very much. Um, yes, once again, for four years in a row, we received the honorary state award recognition for our 2025 product and our captain. This is a very distinguished honor and award. According to honorary favor, after it officially is a critical component of efficient, effective and transparent operations, this award honors the hardworking officials who are diligent in accounting for the taxpayers' money. And that's really done by the entire school district. We work really hard to make sure everybody knows the procedures and policies and all rules and regulations, because we're like the way the Tory district department. We don't do it alone, because if we didn't get by even the people that are on the headquarters and the administrators, we would not be successful, and we would not have a course like this. So this truly is a joint collateral, um, award address. Uh, but in order to receive this, you have to do your, uh, file your financial reports with the honorary state office within their timeframe. You also have to file a GAAP accounting. What that is, is you operate all of your kind of cash basis of accounting, and after do clearly, you convert to an accrual basis of accounting, which is similar to what businesses have. Uh, in addition to that, your honorary award has to not contain any findings of recovery, material sensations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or single audit findings. So we're happy to present to the district, um, clean audit, um, about, um, any findings of recovery, and this is, like I said, the fourth year in a row. We actually received this award six out of the past seven years. So I want to see if there are a lot of my moments. Thank you.
Congratulations. And that's it for communications. Do you have one more for the board to speak? Open the door, Martin. All right, here it is, for her, either way.
Mrs. O'Wright, Dr. Clark, President Martin, this is school board. It's my February report for the Career Center. A micro of the Career Center High School principal made a recommendation, and our superintendent, the Magnus, approved his request to lay part in fees for the 2021 school year to move the agenda back. He feels that this will encourage students to drive, which approves social distancing, and assist with the economic hardships that they may be facing. Part of these going to the principal's fund to support student success. Currently, this fund has a balance of about $32,000. Any other student activities that can happen under the agenda will occur. In early February, Career Center held our face full virtual student and parent information night. Superintendent Magnus joined in a night information session, and was pleased with local climate and engagement level with students and parents. Just over 500 students signed up for the sessions. October 10th and 11th, CBCC hosted virtual field trips for students who were already applying, they're still considering early, the Career Center. Status report. This was, I believe, at the end of January. For the state of Ohio, 42.5% of students were in school five days a week. Career Center had 69%. 33% of students were in high grade level. The Career Center is 11.4%. And 23% of students in Ohio were fully revoked, and 19% for the first. Also, our staff received their COVID-19 tests, referred vaccination, I should say, on Saturday, February 13th, at the ESC in Maryville, Ohio. Second dose of the Pfizer shot that we administered on March 6th. We had about 70% of the faculty to take a shot. Somebody to roll over. We just got this information last week. This relates to one of students who were juniors at the end of 2020, and who did not come back as seniors, 21. Retention rates were another career centers throughout the play, offering a 91% retention rate, the dying was 91%, Polaris, no, I'm clear, they're 81%. And the Career Center, the first, 82%. Why? We don't know. We, we, we set out a survey, and that, uh, retention rate, 154 students who did not come back. That is a break that's kind of small. And here's how it breaks out on the DA districts. The Bradshaw was 18 students did not come back. Tyler, the high set, one. Tyler, the high center, one. Garfield had fifty three. Independence Ford, we're doing twenty six, which was about sixteen percent of the previous year enrollment. Martha Royal had twenty four, was it fifty eight percent? Over here had five. Twinsburg, twenty two percent. And homeschool folks that are online, trick students at one percent. We sent out surveys of the students that did not come back to find out why aren't they coming back. There's a myriad of reasons, but I'll have a list. Fifty six students are thirty six percent, so it didn't land a perfect. That's about it. Thirty one students were twenty percent of those who were back from that stated COVID-related concerns. We're gonna be studying these and see what we can do to increase the percentage of the area of our students who repressed students while their junior year for this senior year. Next, by the fourth, our next one of education meeting will be this Thursday, the twenty fifth, at six thirty PM. And thank you. Thank you.
No, John, your words.
No.
If you could.
I guess the foundation has their Zoom meetings, the monthly Zoom meeting on February tenth. They're really just two main points of interest. Number one, the Knights Curry through nights are serving currently seventy six students, which is equivalent to fifty two guys of food that's being distributed weekly. It's a concern because under today's economic pandemic circumstances, they thought they'd be serving more. And their biggest fear is that the work isn't getting power. Yet food is available to families that are struggling. And we discussed several different options to keep that alive and remind people that they may need it this week, they may have it next week, that's not, that's not the point. There's no contract, you have to stay there for it. But we all have a turn now. Because of all the COVID money that came into the African Food Bank, Norwegians Foundation will get free food for the entire year. As long as it's on our menu and we need it. So if we need it whether it's not on our menu, it would be out of our purse. The buzzer wire, probably ninety five percent of our food is gonna be free for the whole year. And that's when there's no limit to how much food we have. The second point of interest is the Wolf Club, which is the foundation's main fundraiser. It is scheduled for Saturday, June fifth, and elsewhere than Wolf Club in Hudson. They price a hundred and twenty five dollars per person, or if only one of us eats a cup of dinner, it's only thirty dollars. They are moving, there's much to take care of with COVID conditions. So all the functions are going to be outside, it will be in our functions like dinner first, since it'll be an affiliate. What they are really low is corporate sponsors and writers' grant baskets. Because again, COVID has really put a crutch on some of the businesses and it's tough. People will squeeze out that glass down and that's understandable. So everybody knows that anybody who might want to be a sponsor or donate something for a gift basket to the COVID camp now. Last of that base, the foundation is always looking for trustees, which would require a wealthy needing, but it's the most positive project committee that I've ever seen because it's all about gifts. They are instrumental in only focusing on the needs of the students who are doing it and that's something to be proud of. That's it.
Do you have any?
No. All right, so I have a couple of different things for our legislative update. There are a few things starting to roll out, for instance, possible one is to create a new school warning system here on Ohio. So that is started looking in and that actually coincides with the governor's. The governor has started to reduce what he'd like his budget to be. And he has stated that he wants to keep the funding at two thousand and eighteen levels. Some other pieces that go along with it. But and the reason why he kept it that way since because he knows that there's going to be things that are going through the legislature about the school fund. So we will see how all this plays out. And then Hospital sixty seven has been amended in a way, state testing requirements with the twenty twenty one school year right now. And what's important about it is it gives schools flexibility to use final course grades in lieu of in this course exams. And they did this last year for our kids. I shouldn't call them kids because they're considering graduate. I'm just used to talking with the little ones, I apologize because they are much larger. In order to be able to meet their needs for graduation, if the exams are canceled. So it just allows those pieces of idiocy, like we had last year at the end of the school year. So we're still in a different situation, so that's out there. So those are literally things they're gonna cover. Also, the N D B I C, our diversity group here within North Carolina, has been doing just absolutely wonderful work. And really, and outstanding, where people can truly want to just make something happen for our community and bring about community. Listening to their talk, I am just overwhelmed with the amount of positive thinking they bring. And they did so much work for Black History Month. Here we are, close to the end, and the surveys that kids brought in. They are now starting to look at that data to see what are their next steps going to be so that they can target things in a way that truly means our community. And it's just been really impressive to be able to be part of it.
Are you talking to this guy?
All right. Well, let's move into the superintendent's report. I want to approve the consent items listed.
How much?
Oh, sorry. The first item here is the revised work policies. Actually, it says first reading license required. That is the title you are actually asking me to approve these policies tonight. The first one is the social media revised policy and nine forty three is the concussion policy. The second item is donation for five hundred dollars from the Corosso family for the baseball team. Always, never cease the amazing generosity of our community. And the final item is the resolution for transportation in practice for some students and to see those students there.
Do you have any questions about us?
Ms. Miall?
Yes.
Mr. Rama?
Yes.
Mr. Bussey?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
I have two's recommendation to approve the contract field turf.
How much?
All right. This is what we've been talking about a bit of the day and I know Ron's talked about it, the turf, sign replaced the turf beyond its use. We absolutely got a nice word, it's time to have a new turf on the field.
Mr. Bussey?
Yes.
Mr. Rama?
Ms. Miall?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
I have three's recommendation to approve the personnel items listed.
All right.
Scrolling through here, you're gonna see some things that are outstanding. See George Edgar has announced his retirement in Georgia, but the middle school has done bad business for such a long time, we're gonna miss him. You'll see that we pay additional spending to our teachers that teach college credit plus classes in our high school. A lot of kids need graduate credit, or college credit and master's credit at the same time. You'll see some long-term results. One name you might recognize, Karen Bell. I remember Karen Bell, the little left tackle, who's on that Denzel Ward team is now subbing fourth. Karen was in my office the other day, he's like six nine, three fifty, he's a big ten man. We're really happy that one of our friends is coming back to be a sub fourth. You'll see the educational replacements, we do this twice a year. These are teachers that are moving up on the pay scale, all kinds of extra grand portion of it they've done. And the rest is typical kind of, typical kind of stuff, supplemental and curriculum, that kind of thing.
You have any question?
I want to wish Mr. Edgar the best, I mean, my kids are happening and he was always a name that came up in every class with what he's done. So thank you, Mr. Edgar, for your standing service.
Mr. Rama?
Yes.
Mr. Bussey?
Yes.
Ms. Miall?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
And I have a word as a recommendation to approve the personnel items listed. And this is a pullback because this is Mr. Rama's sister and so even though it's actually a lot of money, he chooses not to. So it's not to give a sense of different problem.
Ms. Miall?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Bussey?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Rama?
And I have a conclusion of my report.
Yes, I'm gonna ask that you approve the consent items?
All right. Second.
Okay, we have the organizational board meeting minutes of January eleventh. We also have the regular board meeting minutes of January eleventh and our financial reports.
That's fine.
Yes, definitely. All right, we are looking at the January of twenty twenty one financial reports. We are seven, seven months into our fiscal year. So when we look at January's revenue numbers, we'll see that we have variance at sixty six thousand dollars, fourteen percent. Most of the money we see was on from the state. We received our unrestricted grants in aid, which is our state foundation, we see there at eighty point eight percent. When we look at the fiscal year to date, right around these, we'll see that the forecast, twenty five point nine million dollars. And we actually took in a little bit underhanded, a little bit over, yeah, I'm sorry, twenty five, roughly close to twenty six million dollars. It was a variance of sixty eight thousand dollars. And if you look at the pie chart here, you'll see that we're mostly, most of our revenue comes to us from taxes at seventy three point two percent. If we look at the flip side of the ledger, through the expenditures for January, you see the forecast is going to spend four point two million dollars. In actuality, we spent four point one million dollars, so we have variance of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When we look at the breakdown of our expenditures, we'll see that salaries were fifty six point two percent and benefits were at twenty three point six percent, followed by services, which are purchase services, at seventeen point two percent. When we look at our fiscal year to date expenditures, you'll see that we had forecast twenty nine point eight million dollars and we spent twenty nine point seven million dollars. So again, we had a variance of about a hundred and twenty six thousand dollars. When we look at our expenditures on the pie chart, we see that seventy three point five percent was spent on personal costs and then our services were at eighteen point two percent. We look at our alternative view of expenditures, that same twenty nine point seven million dollars. We'll see that instruction is spent, we spent sixty percent on instruction, about eleven point nine percent on operations. And we look at the breakdown of instruction costs, instruction costs were seventeen point eight million dollars. And most of that obviously was regular instruction, seventy three point three percent. At the end of the day, on January thirty first, when you put everything together, you'll see that we ended up with a positive, a strong balance of a hundred and ninety three thousand dollars roughly at the end of January. So now we have seven months behind us and we're moving on. Distance myself and take my hands off. All right, we have the educational, I have the educational focus switch and we're gonna focus on property tax rates. This time of year, and after we're done with this presentation, I'm gonna ask you to approve the tax rate resolution. Southern fiscal, Southern County Fiscal Office looks at every voted levy in the district to determine what the effective military rate has to be. And it's all based on property values. So when you look at the chart here, you'll see that all of the voted levies are listed and the county fiscal office looks at each individual levy to determine how much military is, needs to be to generate the same amount of revenue that was generated when we first approved. So if you look at this chart, clearly, we did not cast a thirty point seven eight mill operator levy. Back in nineteen seventy six, when Hospital nine forty was introduced, inflation was double digits. Legislators had to do something, they rolled back in on the money that the school districts began. They took and combined all the voted levies up until nineteen seventy six. And then they also took a look at all the revenue that was generated from those levies. They combined them all and then they applied a factor to come out with the same amount of revenue that was generated by all those levies. In particular, at the bottom, we cast a six point nine eight mill levy in two thousand and nineteen. Six point nine eight mils. We collected, the first year was last year, twenty twenty was, we collected six point nine eight mils on there. You'll see now that that levy is now down to six point two mils. Reason being, Hospital nine forty, when property values increased, we talked about property values back in January. Property values increased, tax rates go down. Reverse also holds true when property values decrease, property tax rates increase. And that happened back in two thousand and eight when we had the economic downturn. So what I did is I took all of this information, and this is our current information back three years, and I combined them. For comparison purposes, I took out six point nine eight mill levy. So you can actually see where the impact of what happens when it's on my department. You see that property values were increasing, tax rates decreased. In tax year eighteen, that was a result of the final update in two thousand and seventeen. And you'll see in tax year twenty one twenty, that we dropped three mils as a result of the Southern County reappraisal in twenty twenty. Now that was on agriculture and residential properties. This Southern County office also does the same calculations for commercial and industrial properties and their factor and different effect of the military. So you can see those rates here. Interesting that a six point nine eight mill levy for residential and agricultural, six point two mils. Here is six point seven mils on this property. And again, we collapsed the information so that we could do more of a comparison. And you can see that the property values increased, tax rates increased. Now, you might ask what happened in tax year eighteen? Because tax values went from a hundred and eighty two million to a hundred and sixty two million. That was an anomaly for Northern schools. We had in our books about a twenty million dollar property. There was an addition made to Psychiatric Hospital on September one. That property value came onto our tax group and then they filed for an exemption and they received an exemption from taxes on that. So they took it off. It wasn't really an increase in valuation, it was just a shipment of the property value to exempt the property. The other side of this is when you talk of village, we have four point nine seven inside ones. That four point nine seven mils does increase when property values go up. So obviously, Southern County appraisal was in effect in twenty twenty. Property values increased by a hundred and sixteen million dollars, a eleven point four percent. And we look at additional revenue from that four point nine seven mils. So what you do is you calculate the hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and seventy seven dollars and multiply it by four point nine seven mils and come up with five hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars roughly. That we will be collecting additional in calendar year twenty twenty one. Now, remember, we all know that we've not operated on a calendar year basis, we operate on a fiscal year basis. So half of this will come in between January and June and the other half will be from July and December. So basically, in this fiscal year twenty one, which we're currently in, we'll get the two hundred and eighty nine thousand dollar increase. And then next fiscal year, we're gonna be able to have that as a yes from the inside of this. It's not a good goal, it's always happening to our forecast. We anticipate what happens when the appraisal happens and when the final update happens. We adjust our evaluations accordingly. And we hedge our bets sometimes to see how close we can get. Um, but we have to make projections. And dogs project that if the values go up, that that inside runs will increase. So it's not going to be a windfall. The other piece to property tax rates is our bond retirement funds. And we have two, school improvement bonds, uh, which was voted by, voted in by holders in 2020. Uh, it's, it started at a 3.65 mil bond issue. And it was generating about a little under $38.5 million for 26 years. And its last year, the launch was in 2026. The second bond issue that we have is the outdoor ambulance facilities, which is has a military of 0.39 mils. Uh, that was from 2008. That was a little under $6 million for that project. And that was about 22 years, and its last collection year is 2030. So these are all of the pieces that go into, um, the tax rate resolution that I'll ask you to approve shortly. But we all know that tax revenue, we show that is the largest portion of revenue that we receive. And how that's calculated is valuations that we went for in January and it's multiplied by the tax rates, which you see now in front of you. And that's where we, um, how we get our tax money or our revenue. Do you have any questions? Okay, anyone? Eric?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yes.
Ms. Miall?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
The next one is tax rate resolution. Um, I'll second. I don't need a lot of explanation of that. We just want to know how it's, how it's designed and how it was developed. But that is the revenue that will be generated from all of the tax levies and the bond issues that the district has. And if you look up a little bit, that'll show you the amount of money that we're getting from the 4.97 inside runs as well as all of the voted operating levies. And both each of the bond issues are set there. Uh, one thing we didn't say is that when you're talking about bond issue, talk about, um, how we generate the same amount of revenue that was generated when the levy first approved, was approved. And that's on our operating levies. On our bond repayment fund, the county fiscal office sends us information. We have to send them what our, um, bond dividends is for that year. And then they assess the tax rate, the military rate on the amount of money that we have to pay. It prints one interest on those bonds. So they take a little bit of a different look at that compared to what they were doing with the operating levies. Any questions? Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Miall?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yes.
Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
And the next item is a provision to permanent appropriations. As you recall back in September, we approved the permanent appropriations. And there's been some changes that have come about. Um, when we start at the top, the change in Oak County, which is our other grants, um, you'll see that we're increasing it by almost $56,000. Our teachers have been very aggressive in applying for grants from various entities. And we need to expand the appropriations for grants so that they're able to spend the money that they received from these grants. So, um, that's why that increased. Others of their services, we get that information from the Department of Education. They provide us with, um, tax number payments three times a year. February is when we receive our last payment. And when we receive a last payment, it was higher than what we anticipated or estimated our revenue to be. So we were just spending that money. Um, we had to increase their appropriations. They are, uh, they have a budget. So at the end of the year, they only have all their money spent or they have to give some of their money back to the Department of Education. So what they can be able to have access to all that money. Uh, our miscellaneous, our student wellness, we had incorporated the carryover from the previous year. We anticipated what we might be getting for this year. And this kind of pulled everything together because we've got a second tenant from the student wellness grant. And that's based on the revenue that we think we're going to be getting. Um, parent underwriting, we have to increase that because we had a carryover now titled, um, IDAB. We changed that, that got reduced. Um, it was interesting because I put this whole thing together on Friday. And Friday, late in the day, we got information from Warner. We got Brad, we, that they changed the amounts of some of the grants. So we had changed this morning, so we had to sort of make some adjustments to make sure that everybody could spend the money that's into grants. And that's why also the grants that are in the 500, they were changed and they retrieved. And you can see how much they were changed. Um, not a lot, but, um, we wanted to make sure that we were in balance with what we have, met the certificate of estimated resources. And the construction project, we turn the money that's actually in the construction fund to make sure that it's appropriated so that we can do some, um, expenditures from that because we're doing the turf project. Any questions? Mrs. Strong?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yes.
Ms. Miall?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And that's the end of my reports.
All right, now our next director of board meeting. It's the 22nd, um, 7 o'clock at this point. We are expecting our revenue to be in person and to continue in person right here. Unless there's one more key change. I hope that you're ready to listen to your own. I have a motion here.
I'll answer.
Mrs. Paul?
Yes.
Mrs. McKinnon?
Yes.
Mr. Bussing?
Yes.
Ms. Miall?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?